Barton.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
And Pingleton is absent.
Open meeting compliance statement, Brett.
I am the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the County Clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place of this agenda was posted in public view in the office of the superintendent.
Item number three, consent agenda, all the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved by one vote, unless any more member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Any additional items of new business to the agenda?
Sure, Arden.
Minutes of the February 5th, 2024 regular meeting, and the February 16th, 2024, and February 26th, 2024 special meetings. Approval of the finance report, approval of the extra duty assignment schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and declare the following items as surplus.
Okay, so we'll go to our agenda item 3.2, and you can see we have three attachments there of our board meetings. So I did not see any errors on any of these minutes. If you will look at agenda item 3.3, our top attachment, open that. All of our investments are current and up to date. We've invested about $1 million out of our general fund, and $850,000 into our building fund, and then $25,000 in child nutrition. Really want to thank Ms. Hughes. She's done a really good job of communicating with Ms. Owen and myself on our investments. Our finance report. If you will open the bottom attachment there, you can see our five chargeable areas. We have gross production, motor vehicle tax, REA, school land earnings, and county four mil. You can see that we are in the positive on three of those five, about half a million down in our gross production, and $13,000 in our REA tax. Though we are up in county four mils, school land earnings, and motor vehicle tax. If you will look at the next page, on page two, you can see those figures for our revenue and expenses in comparison for the past three years. And then I have that on page three, I have those numbers in a chart form. If you scroll down to page four, you can see in bold there today, we've seen a revenue decrease from FY '23 to FY '24 of $256,000 approximately, and an increase in our expenses of $794,000. Agenda item 3.4, we do not have any adjustments to our extra duty assignment schedule. Agenda item 3.5 is our activity fund report. There are two attachments there. The top attachment is our year-to-date summary for each of our activity accounts, and all of those appear to be in good standing. If you look at the bottom attachment, that is the summary just for the month of February. Agenda item 3.6, we have one fundraiser, and this comes from one of our newer organizations, our Alva High School TSA. It is a beef jerky fundraiser, and we always like to get those fundraisers in in June and May, but felt like this was important to bring to the board. Ms. Tyree has done an excellent job of kind of getting our TSA off the ground. Those students actually went and went to a competition in Alec this past week, and so this will help her grow that program and cover more expenses, and so we're going to recommend its approval on this consent agenda. Agenda item 3.7, if you will open that attachment, we have an interaccount transfer. We in Longfellow have their Scholastic Library Book Fair. The middle school purchased books from that book fair, and so use the interaccount transfer to purchase those items. And then finally, agenda item 3.8, if you will open that attachment, I provided a year-to-date or a monthly look, excuse me, of our lunches, and you can see that the month of February, we are up in our lunches and breakfasts. And then agenda item 3.9, we have no items of surplus. There are no questions from the consent agenda. I would recommend it's approved. I move re-approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order accumulances for the following funds for fiscal year '24. 4.1, general fund, as referenced. 4.2, building fund, as referenced. 4.3, gift fund, as referenced.
Okay, if you will go to 4.1 and open the top attachment there, that has our general fund purchase orders, which will be month of February. Agenda, or excuse me, purchase order number 419, with Corbin, Merks, and Haney for $5,000. That is for the mechanical assessment at Lincoln. That was completed about a week and a half ago, and they are preparing that report for us to review. If you will look at purchase order number 420, we have KNS Tire. We had to do some repairs to our ag pickup truck on the alignment from one of their trips to livestock show. Purchase order number 421, the K20 Center, $1,900, that was for some of our PLC, which aligns with our strategic plan, professional learning communities that they came and presented and helped us with in the first semester. Purchase order number 428, R&amp;T Diesel Repair, Transportation Repairs, that's an open purchase order for our transportation. Want to point out purchase order number 426, Abadac Inc., that is a baseball field cover, $6,128. We felt it was important to make sure our field was covered. We're going to have to be hosting all of our middle school and high school games on our field while they're working on the rep part, and so this is going to ensure that we're able to get all those games in. Well, it's not going to ensure it, it's going to give us an opportunity to make sure we get all of our games in this year with baseball. Let's see. Purchase order number 448, Croft Country Chevrolet. We have a goose suburban. This is part of our rotation, purchasing these. We've done, we've done it about every other year. COVID got us off track, and then limits on finding suburbans, and so we're able to do that, so we appreciate working with them. Cost of that is $65,415. And then purchase order number 450, you can see there are $17,922 active panels and stands. So we've gone through each year and been purchasing active panels and stands for classrooms, and this is through federal programs, so we're going to be reimbursed for that $17,922. Any questions on the general fund purchase orders? Okay, if you look at the bottom attachment and open that, those are going to be substitute payments for the month of February. Agenda item 4.2, out of our building fund, we have two purchases out of the building fund, purchase order number 59, to the fireplace for $1,030. This is our security inspection of our fire extinguishers, our defibrillators that we have throughout the district, so we replace those batteries and have those inspected. And then purchase order number 60, gagged on plumbing, open purchase order for Washington Plumbing Repairs. A lot of it has to do with fixing the oven there, which we have been able to do. I'm not sure I'm seeing that next one. You don't understand what you're saying, Mike? Please. Yep. 4.2. Sorry. No, you go. Yep. Yep. Okay, 4.3, our gift fund. If you'll open that attachment there, we have three items, and these items have been purchased as a part of the Alva State Bank donation towards our arts program. You can see that Mr. Plutter's art class has purchased supplies for their room, and then we also have band uniforms that will be purchased for our high school band. Are any questions about agenda items 4.1, 4.2, or 4.3?
How many band uniforms are we purchasing now? Approximately, you have an idea?
Boy, I can't remember off the top of my head. I'm going to say probably in the neighborhood of 30.
I don't know how many we are getting.
I believe we have 24 in band right now, so I feel like it was around 30, but I can check on that.
No, it's over here. I just knew. That one picture of where they won this last time. Did they get superiors?
I believe so.
Yeah. Like a small one. Small but mighty. Item number four. Any question? We accept 4.1 and 4.3 as presented.
Second. Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, agenda item 5.1, we have no retirements or reassignments. We do have one resignation. It is a P.U. resignation from Trey Johnson for seventh and eighth grade girls' basketball. I really want to commend Trey. He took on a really large load to help us in our extra duty assignments, and he did an incredible job. We are really, really fortunate to have Trey in this district. I know that Jenny would echo the great job he's done as a P.U. teacher at Lincoln, and he did an outstanding job as our middle school girls' basketball coach. And so we, we asked him to step in for a year, and he did that with a really good heart, and we're going to search really hard to find a middle school girls' basketball coach to alleviate that load for Trey. Agenda item 5.2, for my communication, I just want to kind of give you an update on where we at, where we are at from a staffing perspective. We have an elementary education position, which is going to be fifth grade, and that's a replacement for Mrs. Rogo's resignation. We also have an elementary counselor position, which is a result of Mrs. Gilchrist's retirement, and so we have posted both of those and are efforting to find those positions. We also have opened up speech pathology again, in the hopes of finding in-person speech pathologies. It's just a real challenge right now. So, but Hattie's, Hattie's working at it. We're working at it, so we're going to, we really want to try to get some in-person, but we may have to be virtual again in a year. We are also are going to, we've got to fill a special education position. That was a result of the resignation of Ms. Mele back in the fall, and so we are also working towards that. Some additional positions recommended by the principals as a result of class sizes or case loads. We need to add a special education position, which is going to be challenging with the number of certificates that we have out there. We have some students with some needs that, visual needs, that's requiring more time for our teacher that works with them and does a great job. But as a result of that, we're going to have to alleviate some of her caseload, and so Ms. Barton's going to work towards that also. We believe we're going to need to add a second grade position. Mrs. Tucker is projecting 93 students, and so very large class right now in first grade, and that will put those, if we add another teacher, that'll put all those classes under 20, and that's really where we want to be at. Fifth grade, we only have three teachers in the fifth grade, and we're projecting moving up to 75, so we anticipate adding another position there to make sure we keep those staff down below 20 also.
That would be two fifth grade?
That would be four.
I mean, but we're, that's, we're going to.
Yes, so that'll be an additional.
Initial two.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Williams is working towards trying to get a good count of our kindergarten. You know, we've, it's been challenging with kindergarten. We've had to oversize some classrooms. So we're, we're, we're efforting on numbers to try to see where they're going to be at. There may be a position we need to add there. And our kindergarten teachers have had oversized classes for a couple of years. The early childhood certificate is worth its weight in gold right now, along with speech pathology and elementary counselor and. But I know they will, they will work very hard. We're, we're going to be attending Northwestern in a couple of weeks, and so I would anticipate we will be doing some, some interviews and I'm sure some offers pretty quickly. We're going to find some students that we can, we can get here. Also want to let you know, met with Mr. Blocker and Mr. Lloyd and a couple of our ag parents. We are, our ag program is growing exponentially, and it's really exciting with some of the things that they've been able to do. And we've got a need down there to build a new sow barn. And our parents have taken on, we've moved some things out and put some things in, but the program's just growing, and, which is, which is wonderful. And we've got really great teachers, which is exciting for that program. And so we are looking at building a new sow barn in there for $54,000. One of the great things about this barn, as explained to me, is Mr. Blocker is going to be able to raise some of our animals so that students that aren't able to afford some of those animals, there will be more room down there for our students than to be able to show. So the price of doing that, to getting even more kids involved, is, is, I think, well worth our expense. So I will keep you updated on that. I know they're working with Ethamericson to put that building up, and so we've done nothing at today, but I just want to communicate with you that you will probably see that coming down the road. Did you know the dimensions of the building? Great question. I feel like, I just, oh, it's not on here. I haven't counted. So. That's 25 feet right there.
Oh, well, good, that's a number.
Like, that big.
Was there some talk that from outside?
Is this facility here with these, with these pens here?
What is that?
Is this facility here expensive?
Yes, yes, that's right.
It seems like, but I don't know, it just seems a little expensive, actually.
Right.
I was thinking it was going to be more like a whole barn than it was.
So to answer your question, there is some interest in that, in what I spoke with our ag teachers, and what I would like our ag folks to know is that this board and district is committed to the improvement of that, of that program, and we would like to see them use that donation towards maybe what are we going to need in the interior of it. And so there will be some partnership opportunities with some boosters and some donors down the road. They've got some, some big plans and some good plans, but I think this is going to be a good start.
I just would hope that the building's insulated. I mean, I'm worried that they may be trying to make it inexpensive and taking, you know, shortcuts and just, just have something less than what we really would need.
Okay.
So I just request that we make sure that it's a facility that, you know, that is just fully functional.
Is there room at that location?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cleared out a lot of the trees, and a lot of the excess has been cleared out, so there's a lot of, a lot more room down.
Done a lot of work.
Gotten rid of a lot of the junk and excess trees of old.
Just the old trees.
Been a lot of good things.
And then any changes to that price, I'll make sure and communicate to you.
Sure, I just, I just think we need to get a lead.
Okay, the last thing I want to communicate with you is, we are looking at purchasing a floor cover for the gym and gym use, and Dr. Nicewonder's been working on this, and the logistics of it, and making sure we can move it and roll it out and all those kinds of things. And so the price tag on that is going to be anywhere between $16,000 and $17,000 to cover the playing surface. The gym is going to be a great space, and it's been a great space for our banquet's and the future prom and so forth. So I think that would be a good, good purchase for the district.
Is it just for the main gym?
Yeah. Dr. Nicewonder, please.
So we're actually purchasing the one that is measured for the smaller gym, but it will cover the surface area of the larger gym. What we had measured out would take it all the way through the metal, but we kind of had decided at this point in time that would give us a more functional piece of equipment to be able to use for either gym. And, and so for the, the short run, for the first purchase, because the next one is going to be closer to the $22,000 to $24,000. So we want them both in the long run, but this one, we, we believe will be able to be used for either gym to cover the playing surface.
Where will it be stored?
Well, it will be on a roller, and so that will help some. So we're hoping, you know, that we will be able to, to store it down in, in one of those, you know, areas off to the side. Fingers crossed. So, yes.
Northwestern has it that way, and it's kind of in the back, but they've got a tarp that covers it with some branding type stuff, where it's hidden in storage.
In plain sight.
Yeah, but it has just Northwestern stuff plastered all over it to kind of hide it.
Decorative.
Thank you, Dr. Nicewonder. Any other questions regarding my communication? Okay, agenda item 5.3, our strategic planning, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Webster and Mrs. Williams.
Hi.
Have you shared that with them?
We were just discussing that.
Probably not.
No, I think so, but I don't know that I, it was shared with you because it was the existing one that we just duplicated, like we updated it. So you have access, but I, I don't recall actually.
Not a worry, no.
Emailing it to you and saying, Mrs. updated, added to the agenda. So it's our fault, my fault. I'm sharing it with you. It's called, that's in Culture and Community Update.
Oh, it is.
March 6th. Bam.
Bam.
Right there.
Yeah, that's great school talk.
I take a flame eye, I take a flame eye about that.
It's all right. I just now thought of it myself.
So I'll have you go to slide two, please, if you don't mind. Because we have slides now to show everyone. So these are the district goals. Nothing here is really new exactly. Parent Square, you guys have heard that talk all year long. So this is just kind of restating that our parents voted for one communication system, and they have received that with Parent Square. Everyone is working toward using that all across the board in every grade level. We have the community climate survey, which we shared before Christmas at each site. We staggered that a little bit, so parents weren't answering one survey in one night, because they proper five in one night. So we got good responses back from that. And then we have the teacher climate survey, which will go out this spring. So nothing here has really changed since the last time we presented. Next slide, please. For Washington, so we're reporting on Culture and Community Update, and I always think this is, we kind of have a fun one because we're getting involved with the community in some of the things that we're doing in these goals. For Washington, we chose improved student behavior with character education. And something new that we've done, which is kind of like old news for the other elementary schools, is award assemblies. And we haven't done that in the past at Washington, so it has been quite enjoyable. We had our third one on Friday. Seems like a long time ago now, but it was just on Friday, and we had two students from each class received an award. So we had a total of 24 students that were recognized. We invited their parents to come in. We did some, like, class spotlight thing. So we also, our, our kindergartners and first graders are jump roping right now in P.E., so we had our top ninja jump ropers do their skills during the assembly, which was fun. But it's really just a way for us to bring parents into our building, invite people in, smile at them, be positive, and help them know that they're a part of their child's educational plan. So that also kind of goes down here with the other goal that we chose. Create a professional behavior standard that addresses a welcoming environment and positive initial impressions for the school. Along with inviting parents in for that, we are continuing our positive behavior interventions. We're writing gotchas. We have the VIP lunch table, which is a special table that students can sit at if they have had good behavior and they get randomly selected. We're also using Parent Square as our communication tool. I've been really proud of the Washington teachers. I, I'll talk about this for Longfellow too, but it came, Parent Square came upon this pretty suddenly, right at the beginning of August. And, you know, elementary teachers, everybody had already set up their other systems of communication, so we had to make that shift from what we had planned to a new plan. But Washington, we're officially there. Everybody has started, and is, I think it's gone very well, which, like I said, you've heard that throughout the last few months, that everyone likes Parent Square. But it is, as a parent, I can say, with three students in the district, so much easier for me to see it in one place. So I know other parents feel that way too. And often I get messages from parents or teachers, just to me as the principal. So that's kind of a neat aspect that we did not have before. Anyway, so we're using that site wide. We've had a preschool music program. Anyway, we're just trying to find ways to get our parents into our building and then build that welcoming environment where we all feel like a team. Okay, obviously I need to move on to Longfellow. I was not talking about myself. Okay, Longfellow, they've also had some accomplishments. They did their community climate survey at the beginning of November. They've had a lot of success using Facebook to communicate with parents and the community about activities and, and achievements at Longfellow. I know that they have a student of the week that is posted every week on Fridays. They are also having a lot of success with Parent Square. 50% of their teachers are using Parent Square as their main source of communication with parents. Their goal is, at the start of next year, to make sure that all of the teachers are able to begin the year on Parent Square, so they don't have to do a change in the middle of the year. They haven't had any roadblocks at this time. So they've also had accomplishments. Ms. Webster, you're trying to talk, apparently.
No, I'm trying to time it.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, yeah, you're doing it. You're in a hurry. I'm sorry, I forgot.
I'm just trying to time it right, so you don't have to scroll slides.
You and that white one that says boy on it, will you move that, because it's really a glare, a white one.
Yeah.
All right, so at Lincoln, we're kind of doing some of the same things. I really think that one of our focuses is supporting our gifted and talented students and finding ways to enrich our students on, on all different levels. And teachers are successfully using enrichment opportunities for our students through, a lot of them have brought puzzles into the classroom, different, some of our tech equipment they're bringing up to their classrooms and utilizing it for students who are finished early and need something other than just to get on the computer or read. Mrs. Binningfield has been amazing. She's continuously finding ways through writing and arts to our students. She's doing that writer's club during lunch and recess where students come to her, and they just love to do that. They're writing different things. She just recently had the Lucky Duck Art Club, is what they were called, and they created lots of really neat ducks for the Oklahoma Duck Stamp Contest, sent those off, so we'll see if we have any winners. She's also going to be working with students on a new poetry contest here soon. And we have a student who is coming to work at Lincoln on Tuesdays with Erica Reeves, and she's very tech savvy, so she's going to be pulling in some of our students in the tech lab as well. So that's, we're excited about that opportunity. We haven't had any real roadblocks. And my next step is, we purchased some chess games and some reading clubs to our lunchtime. So just some different things to fill the needs of our kids. And I really see that these kids enjoy going down and doing those things that just really don't maybe like recess so much, or don't, you know.
don't maybe like recess so much or don't, you know? So it's a good opportunity to do different things, um, and bring that in. We did have something, and it's not on here, but Friday, we did a reading marathon at Lincoln. And we really had, it was the first time and Mrs. Anderson brought this to us. We really had no idea how many people would attend and wow. We had so many parents. Ms. Kane was there. We had some other community members that came and read to our students and it was a very successful turnout. I think our parents and community members loved it and so we're very thankful for that. And it was just a neat opportunity. It was like for three hours and had different things already taken through, so it was a good time. Um, and as far as our students, we're just doing the gotchas and the bug boutique. We're continuing on with that. And for middle school, don't want to jump the gun. Yell that again. Um, at the middle school, they are continuously using Parent Square to communicate with families. And I know that, uh, Mrs. Martini talked about they're trying to maybe get the ability to communicate with students. So coaches can communicate with students through Parent Square as well, so that's her next steps in that. And improving student behavior, um, they're having a lot of fun with their competitions that they do for students who receive the, um, movie pass and they have competitions, I think each week and in the gym and classes compete against each other, so I think they're really enjoying that. They just continue to look for ways to motivate students and to promote positive student behavior. And for the high school, um, they did parent university at Northwestern Tech and, um, Alva High School partnered with Northwestern in the career tech to provide information about PASVA and, um, and the financial aid of college, our financial side of college. It usually takes place in the fall, but they had it in February because of, um, some changes. And then parent teachers' conferences are this week. Here we are. It's crazy. And, uh, this week and next week, so they're looking forward to having parents in the building. Any questions regarding that?
No, but I have a comment. I was flattered to be asked to come read. I thought I was going to read to one class. They asked me if I'd read to four classes or three classes or whatever it was, and they were so well behaved and were so fun to work with, so thank you. There were lots of community people there. Saw a lot of university kids there, which was really nice.
Yep, yep.
It was very well run. It was, I, it was, kudos. It was very fun to do.
Great. And Mrs. Anderson.
I do want to say one other thing, and I know this is off topic for strategic planning, but your last professional development day on Monday, was that President's Day? Well, are you in charge of that? Great comments.
Thank you.
Of course, I was very proud because they said it was the best CPR training they'd ever received.
It was.
It was tech-presented, so I went back and said, I don't know what you all did, but way to go, team. And they just kind of looked at me like it was CPR. But anyway, they were all received and so, and then, of course, your speaker was outstanding and he is good, so.
Well, thank you.
Kudos for that. I've heard lots of sound limb.
Yep, sound limb. He paints and talks.
He's a painter. He talks and paints and does pictures and he's just very, he's very good.
It was a light-hearted laughter type of day and I just, it was fantastic.
I just heard lots of good comments, so.
Well, it sounds like people got stuffed out of it.
They did and they, they didn't, they were sat there for two more hours, I think, and done it, which is.
And you for.
I mean, for any of us. For any of us to sit there and go, no, keep talking, you're great. So congratulations. Nice things. They're very, very successful in doing that in the community.
Item number six, items of current business. 6.1, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve and offer employment to applicant number one, certified position for the 24, 25 school year.
That's enough.
Well, I am very excited to bring Mary Service with us today, um, to offer employment for her, um, in our science department. And we talk about those areas where we're really looking for speech pathology and special ed. Well, science is not an easy task and we have a goldmine with Mary Service. She comes to us as a gold bug, as an albanite, which is exciting. Um, so to bring her home and have her working with our students. Uh, she's a 30-year career teacher, um, so super excited about all of her experience and I know that she is going to help us so much. We have fabulous science teachers. She'll have wonderful teaching partners with Mary Tyree and Dana Manning, so it's going to be a phenomenal science department. Uh, Mary is most recently coming to us from Ena. She's taught there for this year, um, seeing what it looks like in a very, very large school. Uh, we're going to take her from 2,300 kids to about 300 kids, so that's going to be great for her. And I promise you that our building is a maze, but you will figure this maze out sooner than you will Ena High School. So Mary and her, this year is teaching zoology and honors chemistry, which is very exciting for us. Uh, in her prior years, she's taught at Woodford, Visi, Deer Creek and Freedom. And her certification areas, this, this may take a minute. Her certification areas are anatomy and physiology, biology, botany, chemistry, earth science, general science, physics and zoology. Uh, and she also has some, um, AP to add to that list. So that's very exciting. In the past, she's also served as an adjunct professor at Northwestern, teaching in the science department. So we're excited to have Mary. She's here with her husband, Darris, and so if you know of anyone who needs a science teacher, we have a two-for-one package, uh, so we can hook up someone else with a great teacher. So very excited to introduce to you Mary Service.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion. Think about this. No, I make a motion. We hire Mary Service as our new science teacher at Alva High School.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes. You're all welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave.
Are we doing anything fun?
Uh, we're just about finished.
We'll stay, we'll stay.
I don't think we have anything. I think everything we do is.
Okay.
We're blessed. We all have.
Some don't think so, but we.
That's right.
6.2, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the renewal of, now this may not be fun. Oh, I think it's fun. Of the contracts for the following principals for fiscal year 25. Mickey Nicewonder, Alva High School. Dave Foster, Alva High School. Stephanie Martini, Alva Middle School. Jenny Webster, Lincoln Elementary. Allison Tucker, Longfellow Elementary. And Madison Williams, Washington Elementary.
So the evaluation process, um, is done through McRae evaluation and it's a growth model tool. Really proud of our principals and progress they've made through strategic planning and you get an idea when we talk about Parent Square and changing in the middle of a year, right before a year starts. You can only do those kinds of great things if you've got folks, the great leadership in your buildings. And so I believe this board has that and very proud of their work and recommend approval of agenda item 6.2, the renewal of the contracts for our principals.
Move to approve item 6.2. Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following board policies as referenced.
If you open up the attachment there, um, I have loaded all the board policies that we reviewed, Mr. Hanson, um, for his time with Dr. Nicewonder and Coach Foster as we reviewed these. We'll start first with EMDV flags. So this is required accreditation standard, um, and so want to make sure that we have updated this policy. It was currently in policy, uh, but the last paragraph has been, is nipped to it. If you'll scroll down and look at, uh, policy EMI, the moment of silence, um, which is actually amendment of silence, um, we are required to adopt this policy as a part of accreditation standards and so we will submit this new policy for accreditation. Agenda item CKCR2, which is tornado drills, rules and procedures. Um, if you will look down towards the bottom of that first page, this policy was currently on file, but there's been a revision and it is the word, the words, safe room. Um, and so it doesn't designate what a safe room is, but it does designate that you can take students to a safe room. And so, um, we would need to adopt this policy per these revisions. If you look down, um, to page nine, parent participation in the school district, um, this policy is also a accreditation standard, um, as a part of the Parents Bill of Rights. If you look at number eight, which is on the second page, additional parent rights may be specified in the Oklahoma Administrative Code, um, so that is the addition to that and it is required that we have this policy on file. And then finally, uh, well, next one we have is FE, student transfers. We have to adopt the student transfer policy quarterly, so this must be adopted prior to April 1. If you look at the second page, we have listed our capacities. Um, these capacities have not changed and where we are at within our capacities can be found on our school website. If you look at the active panel here, I can pull up the accountability tab, which we created for all of our other policies. If you go to enrollment, you can see student transfers. And so parents can look at that page and they can see Alva Public Schools' capacity. For example, first grade, um, we have a capacity of 88 and we have 94 enrolled, so 6 over capacity, no transfers could be accepted in that grade period. Okay? So we update this, um, usually update it. All right, um, the next policy, or two policies we have pertain to special education, EHBC. I want to thank Ms. Potter for reviewing these policies. There was some outdated language, uh, in our previous policies, maybe not, uh, sensitive to, uh, special education services provided. And so we request and submit policies with better language for our families and students. And so we received these and I would recommend approval of both of those, EHBC and EHBCR. Any questions regarding these policies? If there are none, I would recommend.
Move to approve the policies in 6.3. Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item number 6.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Quinn Trust yearly budget and annual donation request for fiscal year 24.
So if you, first of all, want to start by thanking Mr. Hanson and Ms. McDermott for their participation, um, with our committee. We have joined with, um, a representative of Northwestern, Mr. Lauderdale, their assistant athletic director. We have also had Chad Kissling and Van Johnson, representatives from the Alva Golf and Country Club that met with us. Uh, we had Goldbug Foundation members, Brenda Rose and Kai Flader. And then, of course, Ms. Ritchie, who's been critical, guiding us through this process with the Quinn Trust. And so, uh, we met to begin looking, um, at our budget and potential long-range plans for the budget. And so if you will open up attachment, um, the top attachment there, you can see the, uh, proposed budget, um, that was submitted to the Quinn trustee and her attorney, um, after discussion with this committee. And then you can see the second attachment that we have there is the budget approval letter from Mrs. Gofflin, um, the trustee of the Austin Quinn Trust. This trust has been an incredible gift for our district. Mr. Quinn has left a lifetime impact for our students and golf program and I think will also impact our community in a positive way too. Any questions regarding agenda 6.4?
I move approval of 6.4.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Were they able to meet again? Was the committee able to meet again after the one time they met?
No, we met twice. Yeah, oh, yes, so yes, we met a second time. Um, we reviewed the budget. We have, we're going to need to meet again. Um, one of the ideas that's brought about is how could we, um, create potentially another foundation or another fund to extend this gift, um, that Dr. Quinn has given us, which will end in, I believe, 20 years. Um, and so we have some information that we've received from our school attorney on that and how we're going to go about that. And so, uh, we'll meet the next few weeks and discuss that about, say, a month.
6.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following out-of-state travel request. We're going to do these all together. 6.5.1, Alva Middle School track traveling to Hyawal, Kansas. 6.5.2, Alva High School soccer traveling to, traveling to Liberal, Kansas. And 6.5.3, Alva High School baseball traveling to Omaha, Nebraska.
So 6.5.1, um, pretty normal. We traveled to South Barber and Mesa Lodge for their high school track meets each year. Um, out-of-state travel with students required approval. Uh, 6.5.2, Alva High School soccer, we'll be going to Liberal to play soccer this year. And so that is, that is a new, I believe, a new game on our schedule. And then 6.5.3, um, high school baseball traveling to Omaha this summer in gym. Baseball TV's done that every few years, has gone to Omaha and gone for World Series and also played some games. Um, and so this will be another opportunity for them to do so.
I'll make a motion that we approve 6.5.1, 6.5.2, 6.5.3.
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Any items of new business?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Item number eight, consideration and vote to arrange executive session to discuss the employment of a new superintendent of schools, 15 Oklahoma State statutes, 307B1.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Barton?